As many of you know, we've had a lot of discussion, emails, letters, etc. Regarding marijuana dispensaries in Redmond. And we have listened to experts, we've listened to the citizens. And so what the plan going forward is going to be is, we're going to ask the city attorney and staff to draft some time, place, and manner regulations. Those will be available sometime probably in July or early August. Our plan is to put this out on the ballot in November, so the voters can decide what they want. They want any dispensaries? These time, place, and manners I think are also important for this reason. Right now marijuana dispensaries are not allowed in Redmond because under federal law, they have not been decriminalized. I doubt Congress can do anything this year, but sometime in the future, it may come to be that Congress will decriminalize marijuana at the federal level. If they do, and we do not have time, place, and manner regulations on paper and in, I'll call it the wing, they could go anywhere in town, except under, except as created by state law. So there's two purposes for these regulations. One is to give the voters an opportunity to determine whether they want any at all in Redmond. And second, if federal law does change, that we will not be basically caught with our pants down. And we will have regulations in place that would become effective in that regard. So that's the plan. We don't have anything right now, but probably in a month or two, we'll have those regulations for review. And the plan is to put that on the ballot for the voters in November. So the second thing we have on our agenda is, as you know, we did have an incident about 10 or eight days ago. And last Tuesday, we decided not to have comment on it and give the council an opportunity to reflect on it. So right now, I'm going to give the council an opportunity to reflect on that incident, its meaning or anything. And John, I'm going to start with you.
Well, good evening, everybody. So sadly, racism and prejudice are not dead. Bigotry will always get dressed up in pretty slogans or disguised amongst other issues. Racist women make arguments about cultural differences or values with a wink and a nod, like parents who talk in code about buying Christmas presents and help the kids don't pick up on the real topic of conversation. Redmond is not unique or set apart when it comes to the issues of race. To pretend that we are is to contribute to the damage caused by this kind of small-minded idiocy. To claim that Redmond is racist, however, is false, lazy, and stupid. Just as it is equally foolish to label an entire group by its worst actors. It is how that group responds to those individuals that tells us who they are. Are there racist individuals in Redmond? Regrettably, there are, yes. I wish it was not so, but that is simply who they are. How we choose to respond to their hate demonstrates who we are. I'm not a betting man by nature, but I'm known to wager that when this individual's caught, we're going to learn their history, and it'll be a sad story. I expect that we'll hear a litany of excuses and the blaming of others for their life choices. I believe that they will be found. I know that their misplaced fear and rage will prove to be nothing more than a distraction to the people of this community. This criminal will justify their failure and their hate. They will make excuses because that is who they are. We will carry on. We will look to the future. We will support our friends, our families, and our neighbors. We will remain Redmond because that is who we are. Thank you.
So first, I'd like to thank again everybody that is spending their Tuesday evening here for what will be a very long evening and has been very supportive of our community and all of the members of this council. I think what I would tell you is that Redmond is not a racist or hateful community. It's a supportive and loving community. And I would prefer not to give credence to an act that was performed in the dark of night by people who want to instill that fear and hate in this community. I think that is a one-off, and I would prefer to give them no time of day. These are individuals that would have us believe that a person is somehow less because of their political beliefs, the color of their skin, the way they choose to live their lives in a community where we are supportive of all and work together to find common ground. I know most people in this room don't believe any of that. They know what Redmond is. We all live and love the people in this community, and we work hard to make it better every single day. I do know some of us might be angry. Some of us might want to in some ways verbally or otherwise retaliate. And I would just remind all that hate begets hate and violence begets violence. And the best thing to do is go forward and do those things that make this community good and strong every day, just like we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I thank everyone for coming today. So, you know, I sat back and thought about this and thought about it. And I'm not angry at anybody, but you know, we have to move forward. So I just wrote this up, so let me read this to you. "As a citizen of Redmond, Oregon, I was disgusted by that incident that occurred on Monday, June 5th, 2023, in our city. This is a moment in time where we should all stop and ask ourselves, what do we want Redmond to be for our families and children? And what image do we want to convey to visitors? The Cowley Act that carried out, I'm sorry, the Cowley Act that was carried out at the mayor's personal business office was something out of the 1950s and 60s. For those who do not support teaching accurate and sometimes uncomfortable American history in our schools, this is why it's important to do so. Apparently, history repeats itself and horrible acts of racism are occurring in our town and in our community. Systematic racism is alive and well in certain pockets of Redmond and central Oregon. Some may look at this as an isolated incident, but this is a pattern of behavior with specific individuals who are using their platform to polarize our city. This has been brewing since my time on city council. You only need to recall the waving of a Confederate flag, wearing of a Confederate uniform on Independence Day, a local business owner comparing the COVID vaccine mandate to the Holocaust, and a citizen who openly felt comfortable stating her parents' own slaves and how it was all right. Collectively, these actions solidify our pattern of behavior and an antiquated mindset which only fuels the fire of hate in Redmond. It was crystal clear to me where this was heading, and now we have reached an inflection point where we have to decide how Redmond will move forward in the future. Dog whistles and gestures will not deter me from performing my duties as city council. And along with my colleagues, we will continue to do the work we saw to do for the city of Redmond. I want to thank the citizens of Redmond that are in support of the mayor and council's efforts, and we will continue our mission of ensuring Redmond lives up to its claims of being a welcoming city, not just in words, not just in words as it's been in the past, but in our actions, deeds, and accomplishments. Redmond will not, I repeat, will not be the city recognized by hate and discrimination, but instead for a family-friendly environment for all the citizens who live, work, and visit here. In closing, I want to thank everyone for your continued support for the mayor and city council. And it's time to move forward because we have work to do."
It's been a long time trying to decide what I was going to say in this moment. There's a lot of thoughts running through my head, as I'm sure you've all been trying to process. I also knew there were going to be some people up here with some really amazing thoughts. So I decided to deviate from using my own words. And I thought about this quote. I listened to Maya Angelou tell at one time on a stage in Asheville, North Carolina, and she told this beautiful quote about women. And so I went back looking for it and thought, I feel like in this moment, if we replaced those with any marginalized group, anyone who needed someone to stand up for them in this moment, it would just make the world a better place. So I'm going to read it as Maya Angelou wrote it, but just think, this could be anyone who is suffering in this moment. It could be anyone, your neighbors, it could be anybody. So let's just read. "Each time a woman stands up for herself without knowing it, possibly without claiming it, she stands up for all women. I would like to be known as an intelligent woman, a courageous woman, a loving woman, a woman who teaches by being. And I've learned that I still have a lot to learn." I think if we just think about any copy paste, it would make us all better.
So my initial reaction when I first heard about this was anger. And I'm sure a lot of people in this room probably felt the same. I was angry that this happened to my friends and colleagues. I was angry that my family chose Redmond for a specific reason to raise our family. And this is what happens after leaving the South and Charlotte and Atlanta, where this is a little bit more common and not acceptable, but it happens. I thought I was escaping that. So I was very angry. But after a week of reflection, I feel sorry for the people that perpetrated this heinous act. I feel sorry that they live in a world that doesn't exist anymore. They live in fear and hate, and that's not what Redmond's about. So I'm more encouraged that we picked the right place to live. Redmond and citizens will be better than this. They are better than this, and we'll move forward together.
Coming from Toronto, I'm bringing up the anger, and I don't think there's much more that can be said that hasn't already been said. Redmond is a great city. I don't believe that giving attention to these actions benefits any of us because that's responsive, that's what they want, that's reactiveness. Do I support it? Absolutely not. We want Redmond to come across as a welcoming city, and I think we need to continue to do that and not draw, I don't want to say draw attention, but keep the city that we love and understand, that we care about everyone. I think it was terrible. I think it was an awful thing that someone did. I felt shame, I felt anger, just like Tobias said. It's an unfortunate situation. I just, how do we move forward cohesively to make sure that we continue to be a city of Redmond that we are?
Clifford and Shannon, I got elected together in 2020. And in the last two and a half years, I've seen Clifford continually attacked as a counselor. It's not because of what he does and his background, it's simply because of the color of his skin. Here's a guy who's a Navy veteran, former law enforcement officer, dedicated to helping small businesses, particularly those downtown. And these attacks are just continuing, year in, year out. And to me, that can be the only explanation. It's not by everybody, it's by a small group of people. We get anonymous letters about it, and saw it happen last Monday. It's just really, really sick, really, really wrong. And I'm proud to call Clifford my friend. He's a better dresser than me. He's always on time, always dedicated, always interested. And he just doesn't deserve this. Nobody who's, like Catherine said, of color or disadvantaged deserves this kind of treatment. You know, it's obvious there are some people who have some mental malfunction and do these kinds of things. I hope they change. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But I also know that 99% of the people in this community have affirmed in the past, affirm now, and will affirm in the future, that we will judge everyone by the character of their being instead of the color of their skin or any disability they may have. And each individual in our community and this community as a whole, we need to be dedicated. Now, the one part that has been left out and still has to be said is what happened to the raccoon. That raccoon was killed in a manner that allowed it to bleed out right there at the doorstep. I mean, not only is the racism sick, but this type of animal abuse is even more visceral in some ways. How you do that to an innocent creature of God just to make a racist statement is beyond my total comprehension. But at any rate, I know the police are working on this, I can hope they find out who did it. But if they don't, I'm okay. We're better than this, and we will be a much better community for it. Because of the showing of that tonight, all the letters and emails we've gotten over the past week, it's been very impressive, very rewarding, and much appreciated. So with that, I can get back to business. And the next thing we have is comments from the citizens that are here. And the first one we have is Trevor Johnson.
We do have a long agenda, so do it under three minutes, or more, that'd be great. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Trevor Johnson. I stand before you to address a grave issue. Our esteemed Mayor Ed Fitch and Councilor Evelyn have recently been subjected to hate speech and racism here in our community. Such acts have no place in our society. The First Amendment was not established to be abused, weaponized, and to hurt others. And it is our duty as a community to condemn these unequivocally. Hate speech and racism have the power to loot, divide, marginalize individuals and communities across the country. When our elected officials who work tirelessly for us become targets, it undermines our democracy. Redmond thrives on diversity, sorry, I lost my spot there, and inclusivity. And we must embrace our differences to build a stronger community for all of us. I call upon every citizen of Redmond to stand against hate speech and racism. Let's foster an environment where everyone feels valued, respected, and safe. We must reject and challenge discrimination wherever we encounter it. Mayor Fitch and Councilor Evelyn, I express my solidarity and support. Your dedication to public service despite adversity is commendable. The majority of our community stands with you, appreciates your hard work, and rejects hate directed at you. In conclusion, let us remember the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; only love can do that." Together, we can promote understanding and compassion and build an inclusive and welcoming Redmond for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor, now coming again is Stephen Schaefer.
Hi, all. Melissa Williams from Redmond. I just wanted to be here tonight to stand with council, my dear friends, Evelyn, his family, my family. I read the speech to my daughter, whom I didn't bring tonight. I'm raising two black girls in Redmond, so I'm here to stand up for them too and to let their voice be heard. We were talking about what happened over the last week, how it occurred, and I said, you know, there's all this shock and outrage around it. And she was quick to say, why would anybody be shocked and outraged? If you were black and lived here, you wouldn't be. You wouldn't know better. And you would know that this has been brewing and that this is going to continue to brew. When she attended Redmond High School, not Redmond High School, Ridgeway High School, she was not just called the N-word, but the N-word was circled around the school constantly. I had numerous conversations with administration over and over and over again, and they basically said, unless somebody called it to her and a teacher heard it, there's nothing we can do about it. I told him he had a culture of racism and problems in his school, and it needed to be addressed. As of then and as of now, there's a DEI committee that is basically sitting on a website and not doing anything for the school district. Our city has not made a public stance against actions. They did not condemn the Confederate flag. It ultimately didn't win the vote here. I'm saying all of this to say that this is a moment in time, and we do need to take action. And not saying something is saying something, but not doing something is also hurting kids and people in your community. It's hurting my family. My daughter has said repeatedly, this is the most racist place we've ever lived, hands down. She's been pulled over numerous times for no reason. Our fifth grader was recently subject to comments from another student at a private Christian school here in town with racist comments. He was targeted. It took three visits to that school for them to take actions. And what I'm saying is there is going to be a greater grow of this if it is not addressed and there's not real action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. Next one, Amanda Page.
Thank you, council, for what you do. When you put yourself in a position of public service, you open up yourself up to vulnerability. And these acts made you vulnerable, and I'm sorry that they happened. To say that this is just an act by a cowardly few, I feel diminishes the actual problem here because when you talk to people like Melissa, neighbors, or people of color who are part of the LGB community, they will tell you a very different reality, that we're in this post-racial world. They'll tell you that their everyday life and lived experience is not that this was merely one act, that although this is one flash in the pot, a thing that was really obvious, that shows racism in a really obvious way. Many of our community's members suffer from racism in a less direct way. They suffer when we tell them that their history doesn't matter, that we don't need to teach a full and complete history. They suffer when we poo-poo equality or equity and inclusion programs, and we say that they're not important and not needed. They suffer when we say that bias doesn't exist. Because when Councilor Evelyn talks about systemic racism, he's talking about a very real issue, and it might not feel like a very real issue if you're part of majority culture because it doesn't affect you, you don't see it every day. But if you're not part of majority culture, it affects you every day, and your lived experience is very different. So I would just invite council and our community as a whole, then instead of saying this is one issue and we don't want to give credence to it, we say this is one issue and we think is representative of deeper problems. Do we want to address directly in our everyday actions? We want to do it through policy. We want to do it through the way we treat each other and engage with each other. So I implore everyone here to take a step today to make this better, to talk to your community members about what their lived experience is, not what yours is, because yours is usually that of the great majority, and that's what we like to hear, but it makes us feel good. If it's not the truth, it shouldn't be what's going into your brain and coming out of your mouth. So I invite everyone to really take time to reflect, to ask people what their lives actually look like, what their experiences are, and then take the time to write those things. And actually, if you don't believe in things like equity and inclusion, take a moment to learn what it actually is, to see how it affects people and makes our lives better when we create worlds where we design life around, where we design bias out of it, and we create an inclusive environment where people feel like they actually belong, where we don't just tell them, you belong here, and this is an inclusive place, where they show up and they feel like you belong here, and they're included. Thank you.
Amanda, next one is...
I didn't find this. "They say that money does in fact buy happiness. I read in a magazine some years ago, researchers found that the amount of money needed was $75,000 per year. That was enough to buy a comfortable enough life to experience happiness in the USA. That is not the case anymore. My family should be doing so much better than we are, but our son got sick five years ago. The financial stress is causing us to look for ways to hustle out of this situation. Sometimes I wonder if we will be able to avoid becoming homeless, and who knows if we will ever be able to retire. That is the life of the working poor. Did you know that a lot of homeless people work? And drug addicts, too? I work at a grocery store, and I have seen a lot in the last five to six years, let me tell you. I don't think the question is if we are going to help the homeless, it is how. We can't afford to lock them all up in jail, and the murder-suicide route is slow-going. The best option for everyone is to make housing everyone a priority. Our city will grow, and there will be more workers and people growing their businesses, providing services, and what could it be? Thriving. My kids and I were hate-primed just the other day in Redmond, walking around our neighborhood. We were crossing the street at a crosswalk. My son is disabled, and he walks with a cane. He has to go slow because of balance issues. This jerk was forced to slow down and stop his car, which I guess was a huge inconvenience for him. As he was pulling away, he yelled "effing faggots" at us, except for the full word. That is hateful. Central Oregon has ingrained socially sanctioned hate spewing out of people in every direction. It's not the first time my kids have been hate-primed here. We have a real problem, community. People who do this kind of thing and worse feel safe doing it. They validate each other, and they hear very little condemnation of these acts. Very few consequences are passed down legally or socially. Redmond, we could be leaders in many areas. We have more diversity than anywhere else in central Oregon. That's not a fact, but an observation. I work in Bend, so I feel that I can accurately speak to this. Another observation: white folk think they can own everything and exclude whomever they want, and that that will lead to some kind of utopia for them. But that is a lie. Society is better the more diverse it is. There are many jobs to be done to make our community function day in and day out. If you have a problem with queer folk, that truly is your problem, and you should get help. If you have a problem with people of color, wow, you need to get out more, broaden your horizons. You are stuck in the past. We are all humans, and we are part of the animal kingdom. Variations in nature exist, so what makes you think that?
Next one is Carl Young.
My condolences to you guys for what you had to go through. I'm not here to speak on behalf of Apple to feel for all you guys and your situations there. I do want to speak to the, I've heard this numerous times, but I want to speak concerning Mayor Fitch's desire for people not to clap, as his assertion is that the city council must consider the interests of 38,000 people, not just the, well, probably 90 in the room today, particularly concerning the citizens in the city. They are the people who have chosen to spend their evenings weighing in on these issues, the people that are here. They are not the whole 38,000-person group, but they are the ones choosing to represent the city council. And now concerning, I'm here to talk about the negative effects of marijuana, the physical effects. There's no substantial evidence of statistical associations between cannabis smoking and worse respiratory systems and more frequent chronic bronchitis episodes. Personal and social, there is a moderate evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the impairment of cognitive domains of learning, memory, and attention. There is limited evidence of statistical associations between cannabis use and impaired academic achievement, rates of unemployment or low income, and impaired social functioning and engagements in developing appropriate social roles. Mental health, there is substantial evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the development of schizophrenia and other psychos. This is not only for people with a history of schizophrenia or psychosis. That means it's in addition to. There is a moderate evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the increased symptoms of mania, hyper- rates of unemployment or low income, and impaired social functioning and engagements in developing appropriate social roles. Mental health, there is substantial evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the development of schizophrenia and other psychos. This is not only for people with a history of schizophrenia or psychosis. That means it's in addition to. There is a moderate evidence of statistical association between cannabis use and the increased symptoms of mania, hypomania, individuals diagnosed with bipolar disorders, increased suicidal ideation and suicide attempts, increased incidences of suicide contemplation, and increased incidence of social anxiety disorders. Summary, this is a substantial evidence of marijuana contributes to or causes a number of negative outcomes in physical, mental, and social spheres. I've got a list of all the websites that we're taking to this, so this is true. So we really got to consider this. If we're putting this to a vote for dispensaries, we don't want to. We want to consider the health of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Jamie Thompson.
Hopefully, this information will be helpful to people casting their vote for dispensaries or to not vote for dispensaries. According to the National Academy of Medicine, while there are some studies indicating a modest pain management effect of cannabis for those suffering from chronic pain, quote, "Many of the cannabis products that are sold in state-regulated markets bear little resemblance to the products that are available for research at the federal level in the United States." Thus, while the use of cannabis for the treatment of pain is supported by well-controlled clinical trials as reviewed above, very little is known about the efficacy, dose, routes of administration, or side effects of the commonly used and commercially available cannabis products in the United States. In other words, the products sold by retail dispensaries are not comparable to the products used to research the pain management potential of cannabis and cannabinoids. So prioritizing dispensaries presumably for the sake of those suffering from chronic pain is ill-advised. Although marijuana is touted as a medicinally, medically effective means of treating a variety of illnesses and disorders, the evidence is lacking and insufficient to establish and demonstrate this. Again, from the National Academy of Medicine. Cancer, quote, "There is insufficient evidence to support or refute the conclusion that cannabinoids are an effective treatment for cancers, including glioma." Irritable bowel syndrome, "There is insufficient evidence to support or refute the conclusion that dronibinol is an effective treatment for the symptoms of irritable bowel syndrome." Continuing on with epilepsy-tourette syndrome, Huntington's disease, Parkinson's disease, dystonia, dementia, substance addiction, glaucoma, anxiety, depression, PTSD, schizophrenia. They continue to say, limited evidence, insufficient evidence, more research needed. So in summary, the idea that marijuana, particularly in the form available from retail dispensaries, is medicinally useful, is dubious at best. In no way should convenience of those seeking marijuana as a medical treatment be of higher priority than the safety and well-being of our community, particularly when the medical benefits of marijuana are unproven at best.
Thank you. Dave Vassinius. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah, that was pretty good, actually. It's not the easiest name, a lot of syllables going on there. Anyhow, yeah, I was a teacher at Redmond High School for twenty-three years. That was a lot of fun. I enjoyed that thoroughly. Just to give you a quick background, I've never been up here before. This is intimidating. I'd rather talk to like high school kids. Anyhow, a few of us were sort of kicking some things around. And this thing kind of struck me as far as like the financial impact. I know there was some folks that were talking about the possible financial benefit. So we put some numbers together. And if our numbers are correct, it's kind of interesting. Because what we found is, and I think we got this from a pretty good source, it was right here, you guys. In 2022, 2023 projection, 1.1 million local tax taken in, 150,000 state taxes, which on the surface sounds, hey, that might be beneficial. But then we have twenty-five dispensaries. And if you divide that by twenty-five dispensaries, it comes out to about fifty thousand per dispensary for your intake. You guys probably already knew that. Anyhow, so then I was thinking about Redmond. If we bring a dispensary in here, that'd be one dispensary, maybe a gain of fifty thousand bucks if it all kind of plays out right. And then you think about, you know, and I really appreciate that it's going to go to public vote, by the way. I think we have enough issues that are dividing people. And to allow the public to vote, that was a great idea for you guys, by the way, I think, anyhow. But anyhow, when you start looking at possible costs, and you know, it gets into kind of subjective, you know, different interpretations, you know, will that increase our police work? And that sort of thing. And what will happen in schools? I've been talking to, I used to sit in, Nathan Seido taught health at Redmond High. I'm going to get buzzed here pretty quick. Anyhow, Nathan taught health, and we had some excellent speakers. And I've been, I tried to get ahold of him and couldn't get him. They talked about medical issues around marijuana. Boy, it was surprising. There are a lot of negatives, health-wise. And so I'm hoping that the public is kind of really doing their research and their homework. I think it will have an impact. It'll keep our administrators busy. You know, it's kind of really, in my, it's common sense that if you have easier access in a community, you're going to have more issues with kids buying for other kids and this sort of thing. And I know that can be disputed, and we try to get some data in here. But anyhow, for myself, I think overall, I think the benefits of bringing it in here are far outweighed by the negatives, and I think fifty thousand bucks. I don't think that's worth it. Hey, three seconds, two?
So thank you for letting me have some time to talk to you guys. And Mayor Fitch and Councilor Evelyn, is that? I'm sorry to hear what happened to you guys. I haven't really heard about that. It's disgusting. It's a problem. I had planned to talk about the idea of dispensary. I'm a pastor here in Redmond, and I thought I'd bring just a pastoral voice to that, but it also, I think, has bearing on what's going on here. And the problem that I think that we're seeing is that too many people are operating on this view of freedom that we might call a libertarian freedom, which is the idea that people ought to be free to do what they want. And it's like, well, okay, that sounds good, fair enough on the first glance, but nobody actually thinks like that, because none of us actually think people should be completely unrestrained to do what they want. And the problem really with that is that even if people have the freedom to do what they want, they don't have the freedom to choose what they want. We don't have the freedom to want what we want. And so then we get into a dispute, like, what do some people want? To slaughter an animal and leave a nasty note on the doorstep? It's like, well, we should all look at that and say, it doesn't matter if that's what somebody wants to do, they shouldn't do it. It's immoral, it's wrong, it's disgusting. It's any number of things that we could say about that. But it invites the idea, it's like, none of us think that an absolute libertarian view of freedom, that people ought to just be free to do what they want, that's not going to work. And if that's the view that we're operating on generally, then we're going to get into trouble. Which is why the greatest moral thinkers of Western civilization have always held to a different view of freedom. It was not the freedom of the hedonistic impulse gratification. It wasn't the freedom to just, whatever I want to do, I can just go do it. It was the freedom of self-control, to be able to become the best of what I can be for the sake of the community in which I live. It was the freedom to pursue who I can possibly be, the very best version. So the freedom for me to have the self-control, to be the best father, the best husband, the best neighbor, the best citizen, the best pastor that I can be in relation to the folks around me, my neighborhood, and the city around me that I live in. And so if we are operating on a libertarian view of freedom, we're not going to get very far. We need to have a different view, a view of self-control, a view of the ability to pursue what we need to be. And I think that that's what we need to vote toward, we need to work toward as a community, we need to work toward as a city. And you as the leaders of our city and our community, I think you need to set that example and speak to that. You need to exhort and encourage people not to just pursue whatever they want to do, but to pursue self-control and the ability to do what they should do. But that requires you to have a vision of what people should do. And so on the issue of dispensaries, I don't think we should be allowing dispensaries in the city because it will send a message that we believe in a libertarian view of freedom, that this drug is good to have recreationally available, and you should be able to do it if you want to. And so I encourage us all to think about, what is the view of freedom that we have?
Thanks, Brad. Good timing. Donna Apple.
She left.
Okay, then we have Gavin Alston. Well, you certainly cut down the average age of our students. Yeah, Gavin, sit at the table. And Mike, I'll end with my comments.
My name's Gavin, I'm nineteen years old. Why should us black people suffer from racism when there are other races, like murders and numbers? When us black people are showing respect and kindness, but we still get treated like crap? There are rumors going around saying black people this and black people that when there are probably happening from other races. People are from other's people. It is always us black people, we should not have to get treated like this. When I was in third grade, I went to a school called Sage. I felt like I belonged. Now I'm in fourth, a lot of people have been calling me the N-word or a monkey, even a black boy. My girl said to me, I would hate you, but that's called animal abuse. That to me, we should not get treated like this. We should get treated equally. This is not fair to us black people.
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you.
Okay, I was okay. How did we get?
Oh, that's something to follow up. And Ruben.
There we go, that's something to follow up on. Really, I don't have much else to add to that, because that's what I want to highlight and bring to attention, is that those are the voices that we should be listening to when we decide whether this community is racist or not. It's those that are the victims of these crimes, it's those that are the victims of these attacks that we should be listening to when we decide whether our city is racist or not. A white person standing up in this moment and saying, our town is not racist, I find to be unacceptable. We should be listening. We should be hearing. We should allow these voices to do the speaking in this moment. So with that, I can move on, but I would like to add one last thing. There has to be accountability for this. When this individual was caught, it can't be softened, it has to be called for what it is. I heard race, and I heard heat coming from city councillors tonight when they had their moment to speak, and I agree, that is what needs to be charged in this moment. And so I hope that there is accountability to show others in our community who do harbor these same feelings and would be emboldened to act in this way if there is not accountability and consequences for this current moment. Let us continue to hear from these other voices and let them decide whether this town is racist or not. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we're going to do is take about a five-minute break, because you're welcome to stay. The rest of our dinner is pretty darned dry. You're welcome to stay, and if you have any, you have your time, but I'm going to take about five minutes.